Good evening.
Good.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 18, 2017 Workshop Regular Meeting of the West Milford Board of Education. I would ask that you please silence or turn off your cell phones. So this is not to interfere with the meeting, and please note the locations of all the emergency exits. I don't have any tonight, although I've been busy the past couple of weeks. Anybody have anything they'd want a moment of silence for? No?
A peaceful summer for our faculty-staff and students.
We can wish them that.
Yeah, well, that sounds good. Yeah, we'll have a moment of silence for our staff to hopefully they'll enjoy their summer, and it'll be uneventful, and that they'll come back smiling and happy for the start of the new school year.
And students as well.
And the students as well. Can we stand for the flags, please? Loyal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, Herald News, The Trends, The Record, AIM, West Milford. I think we could take that out now.
Well, it was advertised that way.
Okay, okay, all right. The message to West Milford Town Hall, County Superintendent's Office, Board Attorney in Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the administration building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mrs. Francisco.
Mr. Bailey, Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mrs. Guire.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Uber.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Robbins.
Mr. Booth.
Present. Okay, Glenn, would you do us the honors of reading the resolutions for executive session?
I will, but I'd first like to ask Mr. Roselli if he would like to reword it, and do you have the alert put out by Shankfroest, because I don't believe it complies with any.
It's much better.
It's been changed since the last meeting.
Not much.
Litigation matters, but we can't mention clients. Education matters, can't mention students.
I'll leave it to you.
This is fine, we'll reword the second.
All right. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the following resolution. Resolved at the board going to executive session at approximately 9:00 PM for approximately 60 minutes, for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, and leave requests, as well as current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. Matters discussed in executive session shall be made public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Dr. Anamon, superintendent's report, please.
Yes, before we even get to the two items on the superintendent's report, I did receive a notice on Friday from the state. This is in regards to, I alluded at the June meeting about the state aid possibly being reduced for this year. We passed a budget at the public hearing in April, and since then, we talked about possibly the fiscal year '18 for the state aid diminishing by about $20,000, and it did do that. There was a short government shutdown right after the new fiscal year, July 1, 2, 3, I think it was, but the budget was finalized and signed, and we are receiving about $20,000 less than state aid. And the guidance we received on Friday indicated that we have to have a, hold a new public hearing no later than August 1st. So it can be, we're gonna have to plan, at some point, we'll have to see what days next week we can get a minimum of five people here to readvertise, renotice, and revote on our budget at $20,000 less than it is now. So we have to have that by August 1, and then we have to have all our budget docs into the county office by August 7. So that really leaves us next week, so we'll be asking you to check your calendars to see which day next week you can make it for a brief, I'll say a five-minute meeting, maybe we can even make it out in three, because I anticipate just one voting item, open a meeting, vote on the budget, adjourn.
Why can't we do that? We have to have a public hearing.
We have to know that.
You have to advertise it as a public hearing.
Public hearing.
This wasn't advertised as that. This hasn't been advertised as the budget public hearing.
So we noticed this meeting a few weeks ago, and this information came in Friday afternoon, so we don't have it ready for tonight, but if you could start looking at your calendars for next week, hopefully you can find one night where there's five people available.
Will you be sending out an email, and then you'll be responding?
Well, we could do that tomorrow, to see which days.
Right now, yeah.
Does anybody, can anybody show hands, make it Tuesday or Wednesday next week? I can make it Tuesday.
I have my phone.
Well, Glenn, for five minutes, or are you going camping? Remember you saying you were going up to Acadia?
It would be difficult for me.
Give me a minute. I shut it off, because I don't like it. Because my luck it over the whole room. My luck will never go on. I'm so glad I am now holding up the meeting. Barbara, I can do Tuesday.
Okay, we got enough people then, Tuesday.
You do have enough for Tuesday?
Yeah, if it's only gonna be three or four minutes.
We hope.
Who? What's better, everybody seven or 7:30?
7:05, I can do Tuesday or Wednesday.
Steve, I see you were shaking your head, now 7:30 is better for you?
Yeah, but seven is fine, and that's what we do.
Okay.
You have five?
Yeah, Will.
So that's what, Tuesday?
Yeah. July 26.
Yeah, 25th.
25th. So when are we from tonight? And we'll notice the meeting, et cetera. Like I said, it'll just be a one-item voting agenda that night. So our summer update, and thank you all for your quick responses, I know you're all busy. Summer update, we met this week for two days, yesterday and today, with our administrative team, and we have another day next week of training with Mr. Roselli to come in with our administrative team. And we're talking about, we talked about aligning our visions, our expectations for the coming year. We'll be going over some HIB trainings next week as well, some Achieve New Jersey updates, things of a general administrative nature, but we're really making a concerted effort to get the entire administrative team aligned with our district goals, which I believe they were this year, but we're really even looking to make it more aligned for next year. And next one, the monthly progress towards the district goals. As you know, our year just started. Dan and I have been meeting with each administrator. We shared the district goals with the administrative team when we passed them, probably in middle of May, and we asked them to take them back to their departments or their schools, sit with their staff, and really craft some goals that, for their school or their department, that are aligned with our district goals. So we've been meeting with the administrative team individually over the past two weeks, for about an hour, hour and a half, maybe two hours for each administrator, to go over these goals. And that will form the basis of next month's presentation, where I'll kind of pull it all together for us, and I'll create a PowerPoint for the board and for the entire community that really shows us what we're looking to focus on for the next school year, for the 2017-18 school year. We have four district goals, and we are gonna look to hit the ground rolling come September 1, if not sooner. Thank you.
Mr. Novak, Education.
All right, just to follow up from some of Dr. Anamon's comments, we, you know, we met with our administrative team yesterday and today, as he mentioned. Two items that I wanted to point out that are up for approval this evening is the continuation of our training in readers and writers workshop, as well as our best practices and methods in mathematics that we are continuing with our existing plan. Last year, we trained in methods of mathematics, our fifth and sixth grade, all of our math teachers in that regard. And next year, we are continuing that training with those grade levels, as well as adding additionally first and second grade. We've also, which is not part of our, the RFP that's up for approval tonight, using our, we just got our allotments for our Title II Professional Development, we're gonna begin a relationship with Rowan University, and that presenter is coming in on September 6 to work with our math department, grades 7 through 12, to really play into some of our district goals in terms of differentiated instruction and, you know, addressing our students regardless of content. So it's a series of professional development that can work for whether you're the geometry teacher, Algebra II, et cetera. So we're really excited about that. That's a new proposal we developed towards the end of the school year, and Mrs. Gritina has been involved, and we're really pushing that forward to get, you know, really a pre-K to 12 perspective on how we can improve mathematics. So this is a precursor to a lot of the work we have planned in auditing our math program and taking a look at the things that we need to do better going forward. So we're really, really excited about that. In our readers, writers, and workshop training, we've completed this year working with our third and fourth grades teaching staff. This year, we will continue. They met for 10 days with the trainer this year. Next year, they're going to be working for five with those same grade levels to maintain some of the things they worked on, and we're gonna be adding in fifth and eighth grade, as well as some maintenance with our seventh-grade teachers. So our growth in that regard, again, K8 is pretty significant, and we're hoping to, you know, have a great year with that. We had our literacy consultant come in, and she met with our administrative team on Friday. We met at the new Township Library Conference Room, which was a great, which is a great venue to host a nice professional opportunity. It was great to see that building being used the way it is, and our community seeing our administrative staff in there, working hard during the summer, and really getting ready for the school year. So again, I just wanted to point out those two items, because they are up for approval tonight.
Sure.
Do you have an update on the number of students in the capstone program?
We had 14 enrolled.
And they're all freshmen and sophomores?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
The amount, is it split evenly, seven and seven, or is it eight and six to eight? Okay.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Go ahead, Will.
Mr. Novak, just to refresh my memory, when do you expect par scores to come back?
We have preliminary scores at the moment, and our official score is probably to be in early, hopefully.
Before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Before August?
By rough, well, scores.
Okay. Were good, bad, and different?
They are not at the big place for this pair of students.
Okay.
Preliminary scores are really just at the preliminary, and we hope to have the final report from the state. I would think within the first two weeks of August. Fingers crossed. We promised them in August. We believe cautiously optimistic we're gonna get them the first two weeks in August.
Debbie.
When you say preliminary scores, is that like a raw score? I mean, okay, that's what it is. All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Barbara, special reports and correspondence, please.
The minutes from the May meetings are available. For Nicole, there wasn't that much time for you to redo them last month, so we tabled them until this meeting, and the minutes from the June meeting, from the 27th, 28th, and 29th. And also, I'd like to just remind the board that we need to try to figure out another date for the board to come along with them agenda, so this, he's got the back of your mind.
Discuss that later on in the meeting.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, May 16, workshop special action, May 16, executive session, May 23, regular meeting, May 23, executive session, June 20, Staff and Student Recognition Special Action Meeting, June 20, I said 22nd, 20th, excuse me, June 20, executive session, June 27, workshop regular meeting, June 27, executive session.
Thank you, Nicole, for the second. All in favor?
Aye. I have to abstain from June 27.
Any opposed? Put me down as the opposed bar.
I'll abstain.
Legal report, as always, will be in executive session.
Correct.
Mr.?
I have to abstain from the May 23 minutes, since I was in the hospital and not present.
Okay.
We will discuss in executive session any legal issues.
Correct. President's report.
Hold on.
Go ahead, Mr..
I have a question, while we're on this subject. Normally, we would do BSRs in here. I realize we're not gonna have. Whoops. Normally, we would do BSRs at this place on the agenda, and I realize we don't have that kind of final for June 30. Can we get a trial balance, though, of what you've got?
No, we haven't closed the year yet. We have bills on this, on this, tonight's bill list for June 30, so we haven't closed the school year yet.
And board secretaries' reports are usually in Budget Finance, BSR report, not at this stage.
But not, it's too early.
No, I know that. I'm just saying, we normally do that, the BSRs are in Budget and Finance, you have the Budget and Finance.
You'll have something in August, you'll have a preliminary report in August?
For June 30?
Okay.
Because once we close out the bills for June 30, then we can roll the encumbrances into next year that we're going to carry over.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. President's report, I sent an email to Barbara regarding our LGEA that we're doing, and she had told me that there's some more information that they needed, but there's another avenue of funding for whatever we come up with out of our LGEA, and it's through the New Jersey Clean Energy Direct Install Program, where they'll pay up to, and they're gonna make that decision, up to 70% of the costs of lighting. So, you know, if we come up with a, you know, say, $4 million price tag on all the upgrades, we can utilize that program, and hopefully get as much money out of the state as we can, and then bond the rest, so that we're not doing a, one giant payment, and save us some money. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
If I could just clarify, we were part of a direct install two years ago. So we did do the first.
Utilize, yes.
Yes, we did utilize that. At that time, there was a cap on the amount that they would allow. Now, if this is a new program and not a continuation of the old one, you know, you'd have to see what the cap is and whether or not any of the prior work that was done filters into that.
Yeah, well, that we'll have to check, but I had reached out to Mr. Ponzo and asked him what he knew, and he said that, yeah, that's something that we can utilize, you know, moving forward with whatever we decide we're gonna do out of this LGA. So I just thought that that was a good thing to hear, and I wanted to share that with the board. I also wanted to share with the board, if they hadn't read it, and the public, my reasonings for last month's reintroducing a motion. And I'd like to read to the public and to the board again what I had sent to them. My motion to reconsider was not an easy decision, and I would like you all to know why I did it, even though I believe that ultimately the wrong decision was made, and some may not even understand my reasoning. First, as you all know, I've always been an advocate for being a board decision. Second, it was apparent that a few board members who weren't in attendance at our last meeting wanted their voice heard, and even if Debbie was in attendance, it wouldn't have changed the outcome. Third, during my first time on the board, I was consistently shut down and ridiculed for wanting to have my voice heard, and if I did what was done to me, I would have been just as bad as the people who imposed their will on me. With that said, I know that some people liked my decision and others hated it, but that leads to my next point. We are a nine-member board, and we need to remember that. We need to respect each member's opinions and each member's experiences in our district, as well as members of our community who get up and explain their experiences, whether good or bad. Personally attacking one another doesn't make anyone look good, but shows how bigoted we are. I hope that we can stop attacking each other and instead attack the problems that our district faces. Isn't that more important? Now, I mean, there's a lot of good that can be done, and will be done, when we all come together and work for the same thing. You know, throwing somebody off at any meeting is not good. We need to respect what comes before us from the public, what they've experienced, and we've gotta work towards the common good of the district. We just, there's too much at stake. You know, we're supposed to be here for the kids, and that's what we gotta be here for, is the kids, not for any personal agenda or personal attacks on one another. Just doesn't work, doesn't, it defeats the purpose of us being here. So I just hope that everybody will take that into consideration, and the public knows why I did what I did. So with that, we're gonna move on to petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Barbara, has anybody requested to speak?
Not at this time.
Is there anybody who would like to speak?
Karen Wilm, W-I-L-M, 16 Flanders Road, Hewitt. Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce myself to the majority of the board members who do not know who I am. My name is Karen Wilm, and I am the candidate that was brought to you last month for the Transportation Supervisor position. I am here to give you a little background about myself, so that you have a full understanding of the opportunity you denied the people of West Milford, the Transportation Department, and the administration when you voted against my appointment. I have lived in West Milford Township for 32 years. I raised three children who attended and graduated West Milford Public Schools, each of whom has gone on to professional careers, one of whom, a name you may know, Matthew Wilm, is now employed by the West Milford Board of Education as the maintenance mechanic. I have been employed by the West Milford Board of Education for 19 years. I started my career as a school bus driver, a position I maintained for 15 years. Throughout those 15 years, I managed students on the bus and developed relationships with the administrators at various schools. This position gave me the ability to broaden my skill set and develop leadership and management skills. I was then given the opportunity to work in the office as the routing dispatcher. While in this position, I learned dispatching, routing, and trip management. Currently, I hold the title of Administrative Assistant to the Transportation Supervisor, a position that allowed me to learn all aspects of managing the Transportation Department. Due to my vast experience working in most areas of the Transportation Department, I have been able to answer the questions of both parents and administrators. After the suggestion of my colleagues, I decided to put in my application to become the next Transportation Supervisor. Since the removal of the previous supervisor, I have assumed the role of Transportation Supervisor, seeking no monetary compensation, monetary gains, or recognition, but doing it because it was what was best for the students and community. When I decided to apply and then interviewed, I was recommended to the board, not only by Dr. Anamon, but also Barbara Francisco, Dan Novak, and Liz McQuaid. As Mr. Bailey stated, we pay these people a lot of money to make these decisions. I understand that Mr. Seidowitz does not expect this to be the Board of Employment. However, it should be known as the Board of Opportunity. What is a community, if not an organization, which allows its dedicated members to thrive, knowing they have its best interests at heart? Should we not have a Board of Education that recognizes hard work and dedication of employees and rewards them with positions they have earned and proved are capable of handling, especially when those employees have shown a constant dedication to students, community members, and administration? Now that you know a little bit about me, I must ask the question, was your decision based on fact or personal bias? Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Seeing none, like to post petitions. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Ms. Fredericks?
It's the hat, what can I tell you?
Sorry.
No, it's all right, I'll tease them, tease them. I don't even have to introduce myself. Joan Fredericks, 38, West Shore Road, West Milford, New Jersey, and I'm the president of the union for the West Milford Bus Drivers, as you see, they're out here. We're basically here to try and, hopefully, you know, overturn your decision for the new Transportation Supervisor, because what's gonna happen when this person comes in? Do you know who's gonna train this person? You might as well just turn around and talk to Karen, because Karen's the one who's gonna be training the supervisor. Karen knows how to do the state report. Karen also was involved when she was the bus driver, she was the vice president of the union, she was the treasurer. Okay, she knows negotiations. She worked on negotiations with us, too. She knows the contract, she knows, basically, she knows everything about West Milford. She knows the road, she knows the turnaround, she knows where the stops are, she even knows a lot of the children, and all the routes that are with the bus. So I think that everybody should rethink from last month of who they're hiring, because when the new one comes in, you're gonna have to retrain this person. Okay? This new person, if it's coming in, does not know the area, does not know the roads, and is not familiar with a lot of things. Okay? So I just wish that you would rethink it again, because Karen would be the best candidate for the position right now, because she can just fall right into it, because right now, school is gonna be starting in September, and they already started on the routing with her and the two other girls in the office, and they know what's going on. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak?
Am I being clear now?
Yeah, now you're clear.
Oh, thank God. I'd like to make a motion to close petitions and requests.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, before we move on, I'd like to make a couple of quick amendments to the agenda. If you can turn to page eight.
Under Personnel.
Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number Eight. There is a misspelled name there. On the top of page eight, it's Christine Sauerteig-Pilar. That middle name hyphenate should be S-A-U-E-R-T-E-I-G. You're missing an S there. On page nine, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution 14. There is incorrect salary for, this is our Movement on the Salary Guide changes. Jennifer Monago, the correct amount should be 77, 950. And the last change is gonna be page 13, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution 30. This is our Special Education Extended School Year Program. The correct date should be July 10 through August 11, not August 4.
My move to adopt the agenda as presented, amended, along with the Harris, Kane, and Carrie.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Mr. Bailey?
I'd like to pull item number three under Budget and Finance for a separate vote, please.
Three, you said, sir?
What page is that on?
Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to pull number three and four for vote after executive session.
That's fine, just like that.
Joe, aren't they already separate items as far as... I don't understand.
No, I mean, we're...
They are separate items.
They're technically separate items, so Mr. Huber wanted to pull both of those items for after executive session.
After executive session.
Yes. And Mr. Bailey wanted to pull number three as well, so any board member can pull anything for a separate vote and after exec.
Anything else?
Number thirty under Personnel and Student Affairs. I'd like to do that after executive session as well.
Thirty? Thirty's?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
After exec on that? Glenn?
Yeah, please.
Jim? Can we also do thirty-six on the hand carry after executive session?
Thirty-six on the hand carry for what?
After executive session.
That's what you want? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I just want to pull twelve for a separate vote.
Under what?
Under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Twelve?
Yes.
Just for a separate vote, right?
Just for a separate vote. And I guess, does anybody need to speak about anything about number twelve in exec, because that's where we'd have to do it? Okay?
So with that, Mr. Seidowitz has a motion.
Okay.
And I had seconded.
And, yeah, it's been seconded.
Second, isn't it?
Just, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. All right. Ms. Dwyer?
Move items one through eight for approval.
Second.
One through eight?
What about nine?
Oh, I'm sorry. One through nine.
I missed that.
Any discussion on items one through nine under...
As usual, questions?
Go ahead.
All right. Number six, tuition, is that per person of the 48 people?
Per student.
That's per student, okay. Can I just make a request in future, when we have something like that, put the total in parentheses somewhere, just so that it's a little bit more obvious to the public that how much we're actually loading on?
Or at least 48 at 11,000 each, you know, would that suffice?
Either way. I'd like to see the actual number. I think the public would, you know, if they're looking at the agenda, they'll look at it and go, oh, yeah, that's an important vote.
557,472.
Thank you.
557?
472.
472.
557,4472.
And could you please give us some explanation on number eight? It's a nine-month position. It's just not really clear to me.
Sure, I can explain that for you.
Thanks a lot.
Just give me one second to just read over the two motions. Right, so the...
Well, number seven and eight probably would have gotten...
Number seven and eight probably to explain both would probably be better for you.
Yeah.
So number seven explains that this summer, we have our autism ABA programs through our extended school year. We have one preschool student that aged in and a couple other students that are aging into our program, so we didn't anticipate the need to have our BCBA present at those IEP meetings and also in need of consultation with our program, but due to the students' behavioral need, the IEP team felt that it was necessary. So that's why you see number seven added. As for number eight, that is our traditional contract with Northern Region Education Service Commission with the BCBA that we've used now. It's, I'm going into my fifth year, so for the past four years, Renee Roberts, and that is for the contract of three days per week, just renewing it for this coming school year. So I believe it was either in the May or June agenda, you, we added that extra half a day, because as we're building programs, we need more BCBA support. So that's what that's for.
And for the public's edification, BCBA stands for?
Behavior, well, it's a behaviorist, but it's Board Certified Behavior Analyst.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions about those two motions?
And Northern Region Ed Services is a new name for State County Ed Services.
Oh, and just one other thing, the Hohokah students, that's 29,865.
What number are we at?
Number six.
That was back to number six.
Second item on number six.
You had two separate tuition contracts.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. All right. I need to go talk here.
Mr. Tripp, I assume that the tuition amount probably denied a number four for students in West Milford.
Yes, that is correct.
I guess it's alarming that we're paying more for students for that than tuition and IED colleges, but I would sort of ask you to look at on the second item and third item, one has 11 students, 52.5. The other has 10 students with 61.5. That seems like that might be an issue. We could see if we can bring those programs in-house next year. I don't know about that. I'm sure we'll look at that if it's happening soon. You know, obviously, you can't do it for now.
Yes, so just a couple comments that, first, I understand that the tuition is high, and it does seem, and we've talked about that before, it seems high, and if you compare it to some college tuitions, I would say that it's definitely up there in an amount, but they are highly specialized programs that includes the price of a behaviorist, a therapist, depending on what the child's needs are in the IEP. Students that we are sending out of district, and I know we've talked about this with the board, we are trying to keep these students in a least restrictive environment, but you're going to have students that are going to require more services than what we can provide them by still providing what we need to. But what I can also say is that over time, if you looked at, and I can only speak to the past four years that I've been here, but we have been transitioning students back to district as we're opening up programs, and we are keeping students in district as we can, as we're building our preschool program. So I think we are doing, in the Special Services Department, a thorough job to do that, but I'm always willing to continue to look at that as we have either new students move in or, you know, as students get older, sometimes we can now support them in our upper-level programs. But I will definitely take a look at that over the next year as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on one through nine under Personnel?
Under Education.
I mean, Education, I'm sorry. No? All right. Roll call, please, Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Oh, it's fun time, kids. All right, let's start with, I'd like to move items one through 11 under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, Barbara?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Staying on four, yes, on one through three and five through 11.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, now, correct me if I'm wrong, twelve was just a separate vote.
Just twelve.
Okay, so I'd just like to move item 12 under Personnel, Student Affairs.
All right. Any discussion?
Can't, right? That was pulled for after executive. No, it wasn't.
Just for separate.
Nobody seconded it, by the way.
No, but you need a second. I'll second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? No? Roll call, then?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
No.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
No.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds...
All right. Maybe a second. All right, items 13 through 29 under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Second.
Thank you.
13 through 29, is it?
29, yeah. I'm sorry, I have to finish this now.
Could you explain the salary guide change on number 14, please?
The wrong amount was put down.
Oh.
Fifty people who moved across the guide.
They've earned credits to go from, from the front to the two, so they could go from bachelors to masters, for example, they'll get a salary bump.
Okay. Well, you said salary guide, not just salary, so...
Those numbers come from the guide.
All right, okay.
Mr. Drew has a question.
Go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry. I've got a couple of questions. Item 13, is that a new employee or replacing?
This is not a new person. This is a person who was left off the list of renewals in June, and now we're adding her on.
All right. On salary, and that's twenty?
Correct, two percent.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-six. Question there, are any of those people new positions?
Sorry, Steve, which numbers again, did you say?
Well, they're twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-six. We've got a list of people in various positions. My question, usually in the personnel, we say if somebody's replacing or whatever...
Well, twenty is going to be the clubs that are funded through the PTA. They're typically fairly consistent year to year. I couldn't tell you every single person is the same year to year, but these are clubs we typically have year to year in all of our different elementary schools. This is sort of an ongoing resolution we have, because these are the clubs and the names we have now. We may hear from another PTO member next week of another club, of another person that we'll just add in August. So these are the clubs that are funded through the PTA that run through the school year. Some names we know now, some we may not know till October, if the club doesn't start till January, so it's an ongoing resolution.
I guess what I'm trying to arrive at, just from my own curiosity and information, is whether we're, you know, are we expanding a program, or we have a new program or whatever? Are we really meeting the needs of the community when we have enough people interested in something that... So I'm looking to see when we've added a position, and I understand...
I'd have to check with the PTA presidents. I know, for example, the trips program is at Apshua, and that's tremendously successful, so my guess is that's something they do every single year, because there's demand for it. The kids enjoy it, the parents enjoy it, the teachers enjoy it. So exactly how many of these clubs we're going to have this year largely depends on each PTA and how much you're willing to fund these programs.
I understand how we arrived at it. I'm still looking for something along the lines of, we've got a new program, there's demand for this, you know...
Do you recognize any new names on there, new programs?
I'm just trying to arrive at myself. Do you need to use the community assistance?
Well, I think, you know, to back support what Dr. Anamon was saying, it comes from the local culture of our elementary, you know, our elementary schools. You know, there's a lot of names on there for Upper Grema Lake, and I know over the last few years, that PTA has worked hard to expand some of the offerings that they have, but as also as Dr. Anamon said, they did that now in the summer. I know the Westbrook School also will have a wide variety of PTA-supported programs, so I think each of our PTAs is active, and what ends up creating the program is typically either a proposal by a staff member who wants to run a new club, or a parent on the PTA said, hey, we've got a group of kids who are interested in this, let's talk about it in our PTA meeting. They put it forward, see if there's a staff member who's interested in running it, and they get it going. So it's usually typically an organic sort of process that happens at the school level. We do have some programs that are funded through our federal Title I money, so those are consistent from building to building in our targets, title schools. However, the PTA-supported events are typically organic of that, you know, that school community. So again, I don't know if I answered your question, which ones are new? I would believe, in looking at this, the only ones that I think I have not seen before is the breakfast bunch at the Upper Grema Lake School, and guitar, I believe, is new with our new staff member, Mr. Russo, who has recently been added to our music department. He was a new hire last year, and he brings that skill set, so that's something he's able to do.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Seidowitz.
On item number 20, I'm curious how an employee that was offered as the reduction in force is included in the 2017-18 advisors.
I think what he's talking about is, well, we didn't...
We have to move on. No, we have not. Nobody's been riffed yet. There has not been a riff. There was a riff on the agenda in April, another one in May, another one in June. The one in April did not pass, the one in May did not pass, the one in June was tabled.
So that name will come up again, correct?
It's possible.
We discussed it in executive session.
Right. I understand that. I just, when a motion is tabled, isn't it the same motion? Wouldn't that include the same name?
It's not on, it's not on the agenda tonight.
That's true, but until that happens, it's as if it's not, great, not happening.
I might have a different answer for you in August, but right now, there's been no change.
We might have another different answer for us next week of our meeting, so... And any other discussion? And that was one through, or, excuse me, 13 through 29, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call, then, please.
Mr. Bailey?
Francisco?
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
I'd like to move items 31 through 35 under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Second.
Thank you.
Number 30 was pulled for after executive session.
I said 31 and 35.
I thought you said 30. My mistake.
That's okay. Get me on my toes, Joe. I'm trying.
I thought it was 30 through 35.
It was more hard here. Have paper ready for both.
And number 32 is, I look at that and I wonder if somebody's being groomed for a position.
I wouldn't say groomed. We have, do you want to say?
Yeah, this is a fairly common resolution in districts when people are part of master's level training classes at a university level. Part of their trainings is to internship, run an internship with the administrator in the district where they work. So it's somebody who's trained to become an administrator...
Part of the practice.
On their own time, not during the workday, not during their teaching classes outside the parameters of their work contract.
Okay, thank you. And number 35, I did not see a folder insert in my Friday package. Did anybody else get one?
Nope.
Nope.
Perhaps we should table that for next meeting, then?
I'll make a motion to table that till the next meeting, so we have a list.
I'll make a motion to table that till the next meeting, so we have a list.
Second. All in favor of thirty-five being tabled to our next meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Yeah, Mr. Bailey, he's opposed.
Is there anything up down the road?
There are volunteers.
Was this on our last meetings, um, agenda?
No.
No, I don't think so.
I could check, but I don't think so.
All right, so the motion's thirty-one to thirty-four.
Thirty-one to thirty-four.
I think it's just minimum due diligence to know who we're voting in.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yep.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, we've rounded up, I'd like to move items thirty-seven and thirty-eight under personnel student affairs.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
That concludes for the moment personnel student affairs.
I'd just take a quick moment to welcome Mr. Mendez to our district. He's our new supervisor of special services, pre-K to twelve, if you wanna just come up with...
Thank you for that introduction, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, Dr. Anaman, uh, Dr. McQuade, and the entire West Milford Board of Education, uh, for this wonderful opportunity, uh, to serve the entire West Milford community. Um, I also would like to thank my wife, who's always supports me unconditionally, and she's here in attendance. Um, thank you for making me feel so generally welcomed here. Um, I could really feel, um, you know, I was here earlier today, uh, at the high school and filling out paperwork, and, um, I was able to meet some, some colleagues and some staff, and they were just so generally welcoming. Um, so I really, I, I'm very appreciative of that. Um, I look forward to working, collaborating with each and every one of you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Drew, we're onto budget and finance.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Number two. We voted on the auditorium a while ago. Why are we adding, why didn't we not know about this? Two hundred and, almost two hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
It wasn't part of the bid. We had taken that out of the bid documents because of the cost, and when the bid came in lower than we expected, at that point, we started to look for, um, prices for the sound system. And, uh, we're also now looking for the projection system, because there's money available to do these things, and it's better to do it while the install is going on, rather than after the fact.
Yeah, I would like to say, I know some of this stuff is discussed in budget and finance, but when it comes up for, to the board, I think some of these things, if it's pulled out of the numbers, we need to know that as a board. Um, just if we could be a little bit more conscientious about in putting out those details, it would be very helpful.
And I think that if we had two meetings this month, and you would've had the work session agenda to, to discuss this in more depth. Um, there was notes on the, um, budget and finance, um, minutes, but normally, we would have the opportunity, if we had the work session, to talk about these things.
I actually meant back when we voted on the auditorium for, you know, so much money.
For, um, for the what?
That, had we known, I would've liked to have known it back then, when we voted on the auditorium in general, that we were missing something that was gonna be over two hundred thousand dollars out of the total.
It was there, but they removed it. And then since this bid came in last...
Right, but we weren't informed at the time that it was removed.
So this is still within the budget, though? Yes. The budgeted here, we're spending here, and it seems like if we're doing all this, one of the most important things we can do is the auditorium.
No, 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 I'm not, I, I understand that. I'm not saying we shouldn't have, I'm just saying that we should've been informed at the time of the original vote, that it wasn't in the total, and that it would probably come up later. That it wasn't something that the board in general knew about, probably budget and finance knew about it, but, but the rest of us didn't.
And I, I think Barbara did make a point, though, that had we had a workshop...
Yeah, and I think that when...
We probably would've been able to talk about it a bit more, but...
And when we...
But that was like four or five months ago, maybe longer.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but, I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, and, had we had a separate workshop meeting versus a combined workshop regular, we could've gone into a little bit more detail, but I understand what you're saying, Glenn.
Doesn't matter. No, doesn't matter.
Do you think that, um, maybe because our committee meetings are so choppy, we have some ones, one night, some another night, if we did them all in one night, so that people could talk back and forth between meetings, between the committee meetings, so that if, if Glenn has a question, he can, he can go to the chairperson of the budget and finance and say what happened, or, so we have the information even before the workshop. Is that a possibility? What do you think?
I don't know, I might be running a gray area where...
Depends on how many board members we do that.
Well, yeah.
Because if we're, if we're four people, and you talk to two more...
It's a sunshine act issue.
It's kinda near the sunshine.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the committee boards and...
I thought the point of committees is that a few people are making some decisions to bring them back for the...
Potentially minutes.
Yeah, but if there was a way we knew ahead of time, you know, what we were walking into, it would lessen the discussion a little bit, I think.
Well, if the minutes, the committee minutes were more detailed, that would also possibly alleviate that issue.
Yeah.
Because I, I, you know, right now, we can't really read the, the committee minutes and know what happened in that committee that night.
That line item was pretty clear, and that was in the budget and finance.
I would be a little concerned about attending one meeting, having two or three hours until the other meeting.
I don't think that would be the worst. To sit around and...
Okay, I just thought, just thought get it over with.
Well, I mean, that's generally, though, the purpose of our workshop meetings is to discuss a lot of the things that were discussed in committee, because it's on the agenda. Everything we discuss in committee then goes on to the agenda, and that's why there's a workshop, but during the summer, we kinda condense that, so for the month of July and August, we have a workshop, but...
My original point was that we didn't know it six months ago.
Correct, yes.
When we made the vote on the ma, and on the really big numbers.
Yes.
Okay?
I agree, because I was, I was...
That was the point. Not, not that we had, it's, the workshop thing doesn't bother me. That would've only been two weeks, that may, would make no difference whatsoever in what I'm thinking about.
With the workshop meetings, what Terry said about talking...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
All right, um, the only thing that, question I have on item number two, Barbara, how many bids did we receive?
It's for cooperative pricing, so it's through a co-op. So we, we don't, we didn't do any bids.
Okay.
They do the bids for it.
Yes, they do the bids for us.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, one or two?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, Steve, three and four are after executive session. I'd like to move items five through thirteen.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Seidowitz?
On resolution six, is the two percent increase in annual agreement?
Yes.
Is that something we're expecting, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Uh, number five, can we just get a little bit more detail? Is that, um, something following up other roof work, or is that, um, just roof repairs? Because I know, didn't we do repairs recently, like, a year ago on, on the Westbrook roof?
Westbrook roof, uh, has a new roof, however, um, where the, um, some of the units are on the roof, there was, um, there, there needs to be some repairs done, and, um, because we're still experiencing water coming in. So, um, the company that did the roof repair, um, also put in a proposal to address the things that Tremco, Tremco is the company that, um, manufactures the roofing material, and they're the, the company that gives us the warranty on the roofs. So they came in to take a look at the issue. It was something that, um, was not identified prior to, um, the roof, um, design being built, uh, done, and the roofing contractor never pointed it out. So in order for us to maintain the warranty, Tremco came up with a process that we would need to do, and, uh, in order to do the repair. Um, this was all outlined. Profco is the company that did our Macupin and High School roof project last year, um, so they gave us this price. We still have money in our Westbrook roof, um, project, because we haven't totally closed it out. We finally just paid the contractor their final payment. So there's money that, available for us to do it without taking anything from the budget.
All right. How long ago did they complete the roof?
Uh, about eighteen months.
All right, how mu, how much, how long is the warranty?
Twenty years.
And we just gave them the final payment, even though we have twenty thousand dollars worth of roof repairs on a brand-new roof?
We just gave them the final payment, because they did what they needed to do based upon their contract. This is something that was just recently identified.
This, this isn't, has, has nothing to do with the work they did on the roof?
Okay.
There is a, I guess, for no better word, like a small little penthouse over some equipment, and this is the roof on that penthouse that wasn't touched.
Oh, it's an additional roof?
It's an additional roof...
Oh, all right.
Away from the work that they had done.
All right, so this, this is actually an additional roof, it's not so much repairs.
And, and, and the, the part that, for me, the part that's good is that it's coming out of monies that we have set aside, and we're not taking it out of this year's budget and last year's budget.
No, what, my, my issue, my issue was thinking that we were paying another twenty thousand dollars on top of a brand-new roof, that, that we should've been under warranty.
Yes.
And it's not, it's something completely separate from that, okay? Thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, discussion on items, is that five through thirteen?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Drew.
On six and seven, I guess I would've liked it if we had considered the possibility of, uh, doing that at Hillcrest and on unoccupied space, or opposed to paying, uh, somebody from the outside, and I don't know how, because we look at this every year, I don't know how we do something along those lines next year to at least see if it's feasible to pay ourselves instead of somebody else. I'd like to commend, um, item number eight, supporting the Midge Football Association. I think it's just a great thing to do. Uh, I have a question about ten, uh, a hundred and seventy-five dollars per exam. Is that an increase from last year?
No, it's the same price as last year.
I had brought up in the education committee, well, first I'd like to say that the money that we spend on, uh, professional development, I think is a, a real force multiplier. If, you know, instead of spending money on tutors, which sometimes we need to do, if we can train ten teachers, or fifteen teachers to do their job a little bit better, we just, you know, we now affect hundreds of kids, and, and so I'm just a hundred percent supportive of doing the professional development that can help. It's not to say that the teachers aren't already doing a good job, but if we can give them new ideas, I am really supportive of doing that kind of thing, because we, you know, we affect hundreds of kids. I'm a little concerned, I gave you information about somebody who was willing to do, um, math, um, development for free, and we didn't follow up on that at all, um, which I wish we would do. It doesn't, doesn't mean we shouldn't do this, or that it might be different, but I really do wish we'd look and see, uh, whether we can do additional professional development. Now, I know teachers hate to be, you know, all the time spent on that sort of thing, it's time away from the classroom, so you don't just wanna do it just to do it, but on the other hand, you know, this, this is the kind of thing, we leave our teachers on their own, to a very large degree, and they do a great job, but boy, if you get even one good idea from something like this, it can make a, make a huge difference, so I really encourage this sort of thing.
I just have a housekeeping question for Barbara on number eleven. It's partially funded through ESA Title II-A, what proportion is that?
I don't know. Um, the Director of Education does the grant, so I don't know how much she's allocated.
Uh, depends on the item number.
Number eleven?
Number eleven, it would probably be, um, that entire number, it's going to be local funds.
Okay.
And on number twelve, it is going to be, um, probably about, I think about fifteen thousand out of, of Title II-L.
All right, so on number eleven, really, we're paying for it all. It's really not gonna be partially funded.
It depends on the, um, depends on how we broke it down, so if, um, if we put the two, so in our budget, our local fund budget's ninety-seven thousand, so if we have the ability to spread that across both vendors, and then make up the difference between the two. So if we have the two accounts on there, I'm not exactly sure which, um, which amounts they are, but I, I know we have to make the difference over the ninety-seven thousand that we have budgeted locally for those two, those two programs.
I'm, I'm gonna be abstaining from item eleven. I just, I think we're, we're kicking a can down the road every year, it seems, that we gotta hire a mathematics consultant, and that's not, uh, that's not what we should be doing, or I think that, uh, our staff should be able to handle those things, so just telling you my, my thoughts. Okay, any, oh, the one thing, Barbara, if you could, um, the Queen of Peace rental, if you could, for our next budget and finance committee meeting, give us a cost for that whole program over there?
Okay.
As far as our, you know, I mean, I know we do, we have to do janitorial, that we pay for, snow plowing, and, snow plowing, actually, might, they might be doing that.
Yeah, we don't do that.
They, they might be doing that, I think you're right. Um, but if you can get us all of the costs associated with the rental of that building, or the rental of that space?
Okay.
I'd like to know that, and then, and then, anything else that we have to pay, janitorial services?
Mm-hmm.
You know, things of that nature.
Just for last year?
Yeah, just for, just, you know...
One school year?
One school year's fine.
Okay.
I think it'll serve a purpose that Mr. Drew had talked about with, um, you know, Hillcrest, and it's something that we all talked about, now that it's back in our, our hands, so, um, all right, I guess we'll do roll call on items five through thirteen.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Staying on eleven, yes, on everything else.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number fourteen.
Second.
Discussion? We only, you know, I guess, um, I see all the trustees except for Mr. Bailey, is, he, um, inadvertently missed out...
No, Mr. Bailey does not wish to attend.
Okay, okay.
I just, I wanted to make sure the vote...
He was on the roll call.
He was on the roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's on a roll call.
We didn't, we didn't agree because he decided to do it.
Correct, but I didn't know, because I know a couple of times on some of the programs that during the end of the year, Mrs. Fritz was inadvertently left off. And I don't know if it was because they printed them in advance or what, but.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, any other discussion?
No.
Then, uh, roll call please, and I would remind everybody that they should abstain for themselves.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Abstain for myself, yes for others.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstain for myself and yes on everyone else.
Mr. Drew?
Um, yes, and abstain for myself.
Mr. Huber?
Yes, and abstain for myself.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes, and abstain for myself.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Abstain for myself, yes for everybody else.
Mr. Foodie?
Abstain for myself and yes for everyone else.
I would like to move item number fifteen, please.
Second.
Any discussion? See, you know, roll call please, Barbara?
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
And I say yes.
I would like to move item number sixteen, for fun.
I didn't realize I had a competition going on here.
You lost.
I did. Not graceful either.
Any discussion? See, you know, roll call please, Barbara?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
He stepped out.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
I would like to move item, we're at seventeen.
Yes, we are.
All right. Can you second to that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it, yes.
I wasn't sure.
I wasn't, I, I'm waiting for me to breathe. I thought Mr. Seidowitz would jump in here. Okay. He's, he's being the gentleman.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Barbara?
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
I'll go yes.
I would like to move item number eighteen.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please, Barbara?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
What are we on?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Uh, abstain.
And that's it for Budget and Finances until the, after the Republican session.
Okay, Mr. Huber, policy, please.
I'd like to move items one through thirty-five.
Second.
Questions? Okay, roll call please on items one through thirty-four.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes. Okay, we are going to move on to special committees and liaison reports, and Mr. Seidowitz, what's your initial case?
So there is no meeting until September, but, uh, I feel that one of the issues that we needed to discuss with the township, had they accepted the meeting, was where our stance on the football field is. That way, there was clarity there. And I'm not sure, uh, the field behind the Hillcrest building. It is possible that the Midget Football Association has contacted the administration. I'm not sure of that. They were supposed to.
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. Um, so that's my recreation report.
Um, with, with regard to that, Barbara, um, in the past, do you know if the lights for that field was, were paid for by the township or the, the Midget Football Association or the township?
No, I don't. As far as I know, I, I don't believe that they've used that field for the last couple of years because it's a smaller field. They might use it for practice.
Behind it.
They use it for games?
Yeah.
Yeah, they still use it.
But I thought, I thought the town would put the lights in. Too bad, Mr. Robbins. Greg, do you know?
Okay. No, I, I don't know. All I, I do know that we've changed over the, all the electric to our account.
Okay. Can we, can we check what the, what they had done? I mean, I don't know about anybody else on the board, but, you know, as long as that field's there, I, I wouldn't have any problem with them continuing to use that as long as it's ours. And if we ever got rid of the building.
Somebody needs to maintain it. Like, you're going to cut the lawn and all that.
That, I don't know if the, the town was doing or if they were doing.
Town was renting the building. I'm sure the town was doing it.
We'll find out.
Maybe we can find that out, too. Okay, um, Dwyer, SRT.
Okay, we met on, uh, well, I wasn't there, but the meeting was June fifteenth, and, um, there were several items discussed, including school grounds, poison ivy, mulch for playgrounds, and, um, the que, there was a question about why West Milford wasn't including a preschool assessment in with the kindergarten, um, packets. And Dr. Anamon, that explained that the forms were outdated and he would take care of it. Okay, social media was discussed, um, and bringing younger kids into the social media presence. Um, and then there was a follow-up on the kindergarten enrollment. There are 178 and you're anticipating 200?
It's more than that now, uh, we'll probably.
Get no more than 200?
Oh, great.
Okay, somewhere in the 190s, we're settling. It depends on the summer activity.
Okay, and of course, Hillcrest came up and we're still, we still have to meet with the town. Um, and that's it. The next meeting is September 28th, 2017.
It goes during the, uh, summer or something like that?
No, no.
Okay, um, Mrs. O'Brien, the State County Schools Association?
Uh, the first meeting will be sometime in September, so, uh, right now, there's no activity.
Okay. Mr. Seidowitz, Jersey School Boards?
Policy services of the S, NJ SBA were presented to the policy committee, and I'm glad that we're all mainly partaking in the October workshop. And that's my report.
Um, Mr. Drew, you have both legislative and technology oversight.
Uh, technology first. Uh, we had sat in on a presentation regarding using, uh, VoIP for a phone system in the classrooms. Uh, that looks very interesting, although a bit pricey, but there'll be further discussions. So just so you know, Glenn, we're discussing VoIP and phones in each classroom, and it may be pricey if we go that direction. On the legislative, there has been a ton of activity, uh, things that were approved by one or both houses at the last minute, um, some of which would cost us money or have all kinds of additional requirements. But I've kind of learned that with a line item veto, we just have no idea what's actually going to make it through, uh, the governor's process. And if we can get him off the beach, then maybe we'll have this done soon. So it's, it's just diff, you know, there've been things in the past I thought for sure, and then it got vetoed or whatever, so we'll, we'll have to wait and see what, uh, what's coming up.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. O'Brien, you have the Education Foundation.
Okay, thank you. Um, starting in May, we, uh, had a changing of the board. We elected new officers. Um, after their meeting, they came across some concerns, um, as far as, um, I guess, re-aligning them, you know, going through paperwork and, and, and getting their, getting themselves acclimated to their new positions. Uh, and there are some concerns, and they're working to fix them at this time. So I'm very sad to say that we have to postpone the color run in the grants at this particular time. Um, I promise that once this is all rectified, um, I will come in and I will be ranting and raving, pushing the grants, um, and promoting the color run.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, well, as you know, we were trying to shoot for a, a meeting for tomorrow night that's not going to happen, a joint meeting of the entire board and council. Um, so hopefully we can get some dates sent in to Barbara or, Barbara, do you want to send us a bunch of dates and then let everybody sign off on it?
I, sure, I, I could do that. And then I also have to provide them with an agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess you should kind of put your head together. We can talk about that.
Okay. Um, and Mr. Huber?
All right. Well, the.
Casa.
Community Against Substance Abuse Committee held a town meeting, uh, last week to discuss the heroin epidemic and, oh, basically opioid epidemic. Um, there was a very active and productive discussion, um, that went on. Uh, there are hopefully upcoming, some, uh, new support groups going to be established in the town, which would be very helpful. Um, one thing I'd like to throw out there is that there is a fentanyl problem. Uh, fentanyl is a, is a drug that's being mixed in with the heroin and other things. It's even showing up with marijuana. And it only takes, uh, several grains to kill somebody. It's also, the newer kinds are becoming, are, are Narcan resistant. So some people, it requires, uh, there was a police officer, uh, in another state that brushed some off of his shirt, and he took three or four Narcan injections for, to save his life. Um, they did two at the police station right away because he was at the police station, uh, booking the person, and, uh, they did a couple more in the hospital. So, uh, it's a very, very big concern. Sadly, out of a town's bar size, only 40 people or so showed up in addition to the panel and the committee that was there, which tells us that we need to work very heavily on community awareness. Uh, if the community was aware of really what, what we're faced with, I think more people would have turned out and been concerned with it. And, uh, that's it for now.
Glenn, um, the summer certainly doesn't help where people are away, they're on vacation, they're doing that. So hopefully they'll do that in, again in the fall, doing it when people are actually in town and not running on vacation. Do we have any numbers on overdose rates in West Milford? Are they climbing?
They are.
And, and anything to do with costs? Because I've been reading and seeing stuff in the paper where there was a, a town, I think, I can't remember if it was Ohio or Iowa.
Ohio.
Was that?
Ohio.
It was Ohio. And their costs are expected to be a couple of million dollars just on treating the heroin overdoses that are going on in the country.
In Ohio, there are places where the morgue can't keep up each day.
Yeah. Where they're doing eight, eight to nine in one town, eight to nine calls a day.
This fentanyl stuff is very scary. Very, very scary stuff.
Okay. Um, we're going to move on to old business. Um, Mr. Seidowitz, go ahead.
Uh, hopefully we can formulate some sort of a Hillcrest, uh, agenda, and some topics that I had, aside from the sports fields, were possible township interest, us auctioning, and what the township, I, a resident asked me to at least bring up what would happen in the case of another hurricane staying where they were used as emergencies at shelters. So those are possible topics that I have.
Looking at setting up a plan?
Hopefully. Exactly. Because that's not our purview as a Board of Education to do that, so, you know, at least have it be on the radar of the township to, to understand that that's a concern.
Okay. I think that's a very valid, uh, thing to have on the agenda. Barbara, did they ever, did they leave the generator?
Right now, it's there because they don't know where they're going to put it yet.
Okay, but they plan on taking that with them.
Yeah, at this point.
Another topic.
Another topic.
Show it on, man. Let's get this agenda.
Jim, Jim, did we ever get the final results of the survey that we did on the public? I know we had like a pulse at one point, but did we ever get the final?
We closed it, I think it was the end of May, the end of May, and it was, we did have, we do have the final results. Uh, it seems to be the, there seems to be the most support for some sort of athletic fields complex over there. Uh, we only had a few items listed, a few choices listed, but that was the, uh, number one selected.
And that was something that we were going to have on that agenda for that joint meeting, you know, because that's really a Parks and Rec, uh, Rex issue for, for fields. That's not something that we should be looking at. And one of the things, the thoughts was that maybe if the money that we have in escrow for Hillcrest, maybe they want to purchase that, that property. So we're going to, there's, there's a whole bunch of things to discuss. I had, um, spoken with, uh, gentleman Mike Hensley in the town council, and there's another gentleman who is running for, uh, council, I don't ask me to pronounce his name, but at the EDC committee, it was brought up where they wanted to kind of do a zombie run down Clinton Road. And, you know, it, it, and the reason they wanted Clinton Road.
Is this the most haunted road in the United States?
Well, you got all this stuff going on with.
No explanation needed.
Yeah. So, um, but, Antwinet, Antwinet, Antwinet quickly pointed out is where do you have parking for anybody? So the thought came up that there's a path right up the street from PK that goes up to Clinton Road. It's a far path wide, and that, maybe that could be utilized as going, the spot, you know, using PK as a parking lot as start point and to go up. And, um, so I, I told them that I would mention it to the board. I think that they would like to do it kind of that around that Halloween time. It would kind of be something cool, I guess, try to get people involved, but, I mean, I, I personally, on Saturdays, we really don't use that, so if they wanted to use that as a starting point, I mean, I don't think the board.
Is this daytime?
What's that? Daytime?
It would have to be.
Yeah.
Full effect.
On, on, uh, on a, on a, on a, on a weekend, so we wouldn't really be using it school, but I thought it was kind of a neat idea. I told them I'd bring it up to the board. Is, uh, is there any, uh, any opposition or something like that?
Do we really want to encourage it?
Do we really want to encourage it?
Is that new business? That should be new business, right?
Well, it really should be under new business, but I threw it under, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But I just, I just thought it was kind of a neat idea and I wrote it down and I, instead of writing it, I wrote it down.
That's okay.
Now, as far as old business, I do have, where are we at with the high school and Macapin roofs? We haven't heard since I walked up there back in, I guess, I don't know, I guess that was April, end of April, some maybe early May.
The punch list has been completed.
It's been completed. They've put in extra downspouts and adjusted gutters.
No, that wasn't part of their punch list. That was...
But we have gutters that are pitched the wrong way and there's no outlet on that side. I mean, to me, that's... Why do you have a gutter? You have a history of downspout. No, I mean, it was on the list.
Oh, what?
Yeah, oh, it was on the list, absolutely. So have, you know, have they fixed those?
I'll have to double check.
And did they do anything with the roof drains that are at Macapin that are higher than the surrounding roofs?
I believe they did come in there and make some adjustments, but I'll double check.
All right. Because the, one of the other things was that, because that, we had that yard area, the courtyard. The trees had leaves, branches, a whole bunch of things had gone over and had clogged some of the roof drains.
Right.
So...
Cut those back.
We, did we, and are we, we setting up any type of plan with the custodian to...
Clean everything out.
Clean everything out every so often, go up and at least check?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll have a final, we can talk about it at Budget and Finance in August.
Okay.
At the committee meetings last week, felt Budget and Finance was a little rushed. We had a little more time for personnel, so we mentioned flip-flopping those two.
Flip-flopping, yeah, I would have no problem with it.
Could anybody on Personnel come an hour early at seven? And anybody on Budget?
Come at six.
I'm sorry, come at six and anybody on Budget come at seven. This way, if Budget goes a little longer, we, you know, there's nothing after that. We can go 75 minutes if we need to or whatever.
Okay.
Okay. So Barbara, we'll flip that for August, see how it works and if it's, if it works, we can look at making that more permanent.
And while we're on the subject of Hillcrest, we're going to have to have, I guess, that putting in, put into our snowplow schedule for them to plow that parking lot. So if...
Well, if it's not being used, why are we plowing the parking lot?
I was going to ask that same question.
What happens if there's a fire or we, you know, something?
Yeah, you have to keep it clear.
We have to have, we have to have the ability to go in and make sure that the boiler's working and things of that nature, so we need to...
Has to be cleared.
At least plow out that path wound, you know?
Yeah.
You know, if you have an emergency, you need to use the building for some...
Yeah.
Yeah, at least just the entrance, but we don't necessarily have to do the whole thing.
Okay, okay. Mrs. O'Brien, you have your hand up.
All right. The big hand is on the six and the little hand is on the nine. It's at 9:00 PM, bless you.
Thank you.
Can we extend this meeting for another 10 minutes, please?
Well, I'd say let's extend it for 20 and if we've, we've got old business petitions and requests. We've got a lot of people here I'm anticipating.
Okay.
So...
20 minutes it is.
We'll go 20 minutes. The...
Any second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, anything else under old business, Glenn?
Yeah, one is that I thought we had established that we were going to automatically put on the agenda the things in old business that have not been completed yet. And I don't see anything there. We need this to help remind us of things so they don't get, they don't fall through the cracks.
Yeah, well, we've had a change in the office, so it's kind of slips through the cracks.
All right, just saying. All right, that having been said, I'd like to ask where we are on the turf field testing. It's been, what, six months now?
We're going to go into executive session.
We're going to talk about the effects of that.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. The legal issues with that in executive session. But it was on the agenda. It's already been voted. No, it hasn't.
No, it was polled.
Somebody asked to remove it.
We voted to do it.
No, we voted to do it. We voted to do it months and months ago.
This is the actual resolution.
And to approve the company, authorize the money.
To pick the company, okay.
So...
All right, so there is progress.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the first...
It's on the agenda, it'd be approved.
It was pulled for discussion on the legal issues till after executive session.
Yeah, you had pulled it for discussion. No, he pulled it for discussion after executive.
All right.
For again for it.
Mm-hmm. That's true. All right, I thought that was for something else.
Okay.
Okay. No, I know what it is. It's just I thought it was for something else.
Oh, no.
Okay, any other discussion on old business?
Mr. President?
Okay, Mr. Sidewich.
Just as a general collegial point for length of meetings, instead of, I guess, to get Jim's attention, it is just according to Robert's rules, just ask Mr. President and when you'll be recognized. So I think that'll help move our discussions along.
Anything else under old business?
Seeing none, I'd like to close old business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to go on to new business. Anything under new business? Okay, I have one thing that, under new business, that I'd like to do or at least discuss is Barbara is our clerk of the works. And with everything that she's got to do during her day, where we've got a project like the auditorium going on, her to stop and go down there and make a site visit once or twice a day really is, I think, added a question for her. So I would like to make the motion that we put that responsibility of clerk of the works under our new Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, Mr. Kelly.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't make the motion now, you'd have to revise the job descriptions for those?
Okay.
That's all, and then you'd have to approve the job descriptions at the time.
Okay. Can we straw the board?
You can do a straw, but it's not an official motion until you do the job hearing.
Is there any thing that the board would like to say with that, leave it alone, don't do it? I think that, you know, Barbara's got enough on her plate and that, put that responsibilities on her is just, you know, one more, one more thing that she doesn't need to have on her, on her plate.
Can you comment?
Go ahead. Yeah, I did too.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did too.
Barbara's the clerk of the works, which means she oversees all construction projects. For her to stop what she's doing during the course of the day, be there in the morning, be here in the afternoon, see what's going on, she shouldn't, she shouldn't have to do that. And it really falls more under the lines of what our Buildings and Grounds Supervisor is, which is our facilities manager. So I think it'd be better suited for him to, any reports that he's got or anything that he's got to say to bring it back to Barbara's and Alex's attention if there's something wrong. I mean, it just, it makes a lot more sense for him to be doing it than for Barbara. Barbara's expertise is numbers. Mr. Bailey?
Barbara has a comment. Yeah, what's your take?
Actually, that's not correct because our Buildings and Grounds man is probably not a good job for a BA, but it's really not a good job for a Buildings and Grounds person because he has his own area of expertise. At least with our BA, she knows where every I is dotted, T is crossed, penny is spent, that kind of thing, has the head bean counter. The right way to do it, and of course, I digress, is to hire through our engineering or architecture firm, an inspection person, a clerk of the works who would babysit that project. I don't think that's necessarily needed here because our rate of success and/or, you know, productivity, if you will, has always been very good in West Milford. So I think you're just kind of spending unnecessary public funds. So I'm in favor of maintaining the status quo. But if you wanted to do it correctly, you would hire a construction management professional to babysit this, not keep it on our Buildings and Grounds Supervisor or any other area supervisor for that matter.
Barbara? I have to say that I've been doing this for 19 years and I so, while I might not pick up a hammer or a screwdriver on a regular basis, I think I have a pretty good idea of what needs to be done. Also, I have no problem delegating certain responsibilities to the supervisor of Buildings and Grounds to be another set of eyes and ears, since he is also outside of the office quite often. I think that I've developed a good relationship with him in the short period of time that he's been there. I think that Dr. Anamon and I and Mr. Kelly have good, open dialogue and we do have a project manager that is part of overseeing the construction that we are working very closely with. But I feel very confident that I am familiar enough with construction to be able to lead a discussion and answer, ask questions and get the answers.
Barbara, I'd like to, did you go up on any of the roofs? You didn't go up on the high school roof in Macapin?
I could do that tomorrow, Mr. Foodie, I have no problem with that.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
But what's the point? What is the point of that?
Just one second, one second. The point being, and I'll go back to something that Mr. Bailey said, you know, we did a, this is just one, one thing, keeps, it keeps adding on. I see more and more times where we really need to have a set of eyes and ears on our project. We had done, I know it was just before Barbara started, we had done a project for the bathrooms in front of the auditorium to make them ADA accessible. They're nowhere near ADA accessible, but we paid a contractor to make them ADA accessible and they're not. So, you know, our Buildings and Grounds guy then, there's, there needs to be a protocol. We need to, and even though it's a, sometimes it's a courtesy, we need to get approval from our local building department for these projects and let them be our extra set of eyes. That's what they're there for. Now, I walked in last Friday to look at the auditorium with Dr. Anamon and there's things that they've done that I would never, it would never happen on a, on a job site. And that, that one corner, by the projection booth, first five, six feet is nice and tight and as it goes up, the sheet rock just spreads apart. Now, that's not, that's not good, but, you know, they put factory edge to factory edge. You can't, you can't put corner bead and spackle stuff on a factory edge to factory edge. There's all these little things that, you know, Barbara might not know, but I'm sure Mr. Kelly would know. And that's why you need to have somebody, Barbara's, you know, she's familiar with the numbers. You know, I don't expect her to be familiar with all construction techniques, but I would expect that our Buildings and Grounds Supervisor would be. But that's why the decision...
But don't we have a project manager?
There's a project manager involved and there's inspections that have to be done as we go along and as the pop, as the project moves along. So the building inspector is going to be coming in.
We meet with them, you, me, our own people and the contractors every two weeks.
Right.
So we go and I, we take walkthroughs as well, but we also go, we have an official meeting every two weeks to go over timelines and deadlines and make sure the progress is moving along.
Questions, make sure that there's progress. So I'm not really understanding how any one person is going to make a difference. When, when the Buildings and Ground, when the, the building inspector comes in, they take a look at everything and if there's any questions, if they find something that's out of sorts, they will make a comment and it will have to be addressed. So there are multiple sets of eyes that are involved.
Does the superintendent have sole responsibility for changing a job description?
No, it's a board decision.
And, Mr. Foodie, what committee do you think that falls under Personnel or?
Probably fall under Personnel.
Definitely.
Because...
It may be worthwhile to have the Personnel Committee discuss it and perhaps Barbara can then address whether she thinks it's a worthwhile change from her end as well as from our end. I mean, we should, I know what Barbara's saying now, but we should hear what she has to say if she can handle it and, and then it's a board discussion in committee and then eventually to the board.
I could add just to Personnel for August.
Yep.
It's not just Barbara, it's the position, so 25 years from now, who knows what, what it is, if it's still going to be under that position or not. It's a, it's a board discussion in, starting committee.
Thank you, Mr. Reselling.
All right. Anything else under new business?
Yeah, I'll just chime in on that. It seems to me that the contracting expertise would be handy and the Buildings and Grounds person is probably out at the site just as a function of their job anyway. So that's not a bad thing from that standpoint. But it does also seem to me that we keep asking about the same things with regard to the roofs over and over and over. It's been three, four, five, six months and sometimes it seems like these things are just not getting addressed. And I have to wonder why that is. That's it.
And to further my colleague's point, that's why it's important to have those notes under old business and just wanted to stress that.
Okay. Anything else under new business? No? Seeing none then?
I'd like to close new business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will move on to petitions and requests. With petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting, it will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes. And then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell out their last name, provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions or requests. Has anybody requested to speak, Barbara?
No.
Anybody like to speak?
Seeing none, I'd like to close petitions and requests.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, one. Do you use the honors as the executive session resolution?
Sure. At 9:21 PM, I'll move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations and leave requests, as well as current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations and matters of a current attorney-client privilege.
Just, I also just want to add to that, employee contracts, the status with district bargaining units, potential settlement and the special education legal update. Yeah, that.
Second.
My second, all right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There will be action taken after executive session. We have a few things that we'll be voting on. And, yeah. All right? Thank you. We're back on executive session, we're three minutes ahead of schedule, which is one of the biggest accomplishments this issue can bear. And we have, did we have them in education or they were Personnel, right?
Personnel.
I'm free tonight.
Okay, and Budget and Finance too. So Personnel was item, what? So Personnel was item, what?
Thirty and thirty-six.
Thirty and thirty-six, thank you.
Should we be doing them separately, together? Separately?
Doesn't matter.
They can go together, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
We go around together. You want to stay longer? Okay.
No, I think it, they're two different...
Yeah, I say no to one, I say yes to the other.
You could, yeah, you could just do that.
All right, so to keep everybody happy, thirty, under Personnel.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
No.
No, roll call, please, Barbara, on item thirty, under Personnel.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes. I'd like to move items, I zoned out for a second, I'd like to move item thirty-six under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Barbara, on thirty-six.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
No.
Okay, passes.
That ends Personnel, Student Affairs.
I would like to move items numbered three and four under Budget and Finance, item fifteen.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Barbara, on three and four under Budget and Finance.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
Yes to three, no to four.
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes to three, and I gotta, I gotta go with Glenn on this, no on, on four. Still passes. And Mr. Roselli has...
I just have a motion to read, Personnel number thirty-nine, resolve that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement released with Charles Massey pursuant to the terms and conditions therein, and which the Board President is authorized to execute.
Okay, that, that is the motion?
Someone needs to move it.
Need to move it? You'll move it?
Move it. Second.
Okay, thank you, Debbie.
That's her job.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call, please, Barbara, on that resolution.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Uber?
While I agree with the overall goal, I don't agree with the gag involved with it, and I don't think that our district's gonna get better with things that'll see the light of day, so I'm voting no.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.